The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, hello everybody, how are you? Let's call, we're gonna call our town council meeting to order now on March 7, 2017, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, roll call, okay?
Counsel Campagnelli.
Here.
Counsel Evans.
Here.
Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Counsel Luddy.
Counsel Penessa.
Here.
Counsel Rochat.
Here.
Counsel Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a couple proclamations tonight. The first one I'm gonna read is National Health Week, so I will read that first. And if someone here to, yeah, you guys are gonna accept it, yeah, okay. Read the proclamation, "Whereas the American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 3rd through April 9th, 2017 as National Public Health Week. This year's national public health theme is Healthiest Nation 2030 and focuses on rallying around the goal of making the United States the healthiest nation in one generation by 2030. For over 20 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our own state and local health departments play every day in the health of our communities. The town of Berlin, together with its neighboring towns of Newington, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, receives quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 21st year of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark H. Kozinski, do hereby proclaim April 3rd to April 9th, 2017, as National Public Health Week in Berlin, Connecticut. I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration and in acknowledging the critical role of public health in prevention and in helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health, dated 7th of March, 2017." So. Send this to you guys, thank you for all your hard work, and we'll see if we can pull this off, I guess, huh? The healthiest nation we can.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot, Ray, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to quickly, um, thank you for the proclamation and remind people that so much of what we do in public health is silent, and you've gotten used to having all these good things and don't realize that we're there to help, help make them happen. But we're also living 20 years longer than our parents did, and not always healthier. And so, uh, we need to really think about all those things that give us longevity, that go beyond worrying about our restaurants and our water supplies, and really thinking about healthy streets, building our communities to make them places where they are healthy, about healthy foods. And while we do not luckily live in a food desert like many people around us, we are not the greatest at making good health food choices. And of course, there's the old physical fitness and physical moving issue. And with that, I'd like to remind you that one of the things that we'll be starting up during that week are the first meetings for the kickoff for the challenge of the towns again with the walking competition. Ours in Berlin will be held on April 5th at 6 o'clock at McGee Middle School. We hope you'll all get involved, I see a lot of scouts here, this is really something great for you to do. And Berlin has won two years in a row, we've gotta keep the trophy here. Thank you.
That's great.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Great. So we've gotta start training for the walking, I guess. Okay, the second proclamation is for our Girl Scout Day proclamation, and that is, I'll read this first and then we'll have all you guys come up, how about that? Does that sound like fun? All right, let me read this first. "March 12, 2017 marks the 105th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, which began in 1912 when Savannah, Georgia native Juliet Gordon Low gathered 18 girls to provide them with the opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. 1912 was also the year in which Girl Scouting started in the state of Connecticut, and for more than 100 years, Girl Scouting has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character who act to make the world a better place. The Girl Scout leadership experience helps girls discover themselves and their values, connect with others, and take action to make the world a better place. And through the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, Girl Scouts of Connecticut offers the Girl Scout leadership experience to more than 32,000 girls in grades K through 12 across the state of Connecticut. Core programs are around environmental stewardship, anti-bullying techniques, science, technology, engineering, math, and healthy living help girls develop a solid foundation in leadership. And today, more than 59 million American women are Girl Scout alumni, and 2.7 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. So now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark H. Kozinski, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Berlin, Connecticut, do hereby applaud the Girl Scouts of the United States of America for more than 100 years of leadership and expertise as the voice for and of girls proudly proclaim March 12, 2017 as Girl Scout Day, dated today's, the 7th day of March, 2017." So applaud the Girl Scouts. Great. You guys are on your way. That's fantastic. You guys wanna come on up here and present you all with the proclamation?
Yes, so I can dance, that's for candy, we can have all the candy. Right, and post that on the page.
I don't wanna have a lot of room here, but...
They're small. They're small. They're small but fit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You guys wanna, okay, one, here, well, don't put behind there, we're gonna go to the seat.
We're gonna change shorts back in front. There we go.
Awesome.
There we go.
Great, how you guys doing tonight, all right? Good?
Good.
You guys happy to be here?
Yeah.
It's fun, right? Kind of? Yeah, okay. All right, so here's your proclamation.
How about, can you hold this proclamation in front of you?
That would be great, for the photo op.
Awesome, there you go.
There we go, that's great.
Look at the camera.
Smile.
I can't see the little ones here.
Scoot in more or spread out more?
Yeah, the little ones in front are crowding each other. Both go next to each other.
Juliet, you're gonna stand.
Arm to arm.
Right in the round.
There you go. You have much better.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Awesome.
Are cookies in yet, guys?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Are the cookies in yet?
Where are the cookies?
Cookies are in.
Yeah. You have the floor, absolutely.
Cookies are in.
Awesome.
I'm Erin Simmsick, I'm the Service Unit Manager for the Berlin Girl Scouts, and we did wanna let you know that our cookies are in. This year actually marks 100 years of selling Girl Scout cookies. Aside from a couple of years during World War II when rations prevented the troops from baking their cookies, we've been selling them for 100 years, and the troop gets money from selling those cookies that helps to support all of our programming. So if you see us out and about over the next month, please stop in, give us a little wave, and if you're so inclined, purchase a box of cookies. Thank you for the honor today.
Thank you very much for coming.
I would also like to say, to all the troop leaders who dedicate a lot of their time, I would like to applaud you all as well, because I know it's, it's not always as simple as we think it is. So congratulations to the girls and the troop leaders.
And I'm sure we can reconcile, I'm sure the, I know the Girl Scout cookies are healthy for us, so for National Health Week, it's okay.
Everything is moderate.
Of course, of course, there we go. Well, thank you very much. There is?
I actually saw that, yeah.
We might need some of those other ones. Well, thank you, girls, for coming, glad you could make it, congratulations on 100 years. All right, we are now at our audience of citizens. So we have one gentleman had signed up, so I'll call his name first, Tony Yblonsky.
It's gotta wait for the girls to...
Oh, yeah, take, yeah, take, no rush, no rush. Girls, you can stay for a while if you want, if you want. Smart, you're leaving, very smart, you guys and girls are very smart. You've taught them well.
Good evening, my name is Tony Yblonsky. Fine, thank you, how are you?
Good.
Um, I was here to talk about, just talk of the leash law as part of the ordinance. I wanted to speak against that, but before I did, I just wanna say the Boy Scouts made a bridge over the Hatchery Brook, 'cause I know, you know, we had some issues there with the beavers clogging up the...
Right.
Hatchery Brook, you know, and that was the best solution possible, although I've noticed when I've walked in the hiking trails that the beavers have moved. If you go to the northern cul-de-sac in Cross Creek Drive, I'm from 133 Cross Creek Drive, my name is Tony Yblonsky.
Uh, it moved?
They have moved, and, 'cause I made it a point to go a little bit more towards Bicentennial Park. I know in the past, we've had many people instrumental in helping establish the hiking trails and connecting them up, and that was a great idea, because I'm one of the past presidents of the Responsible Dog Owners Group, and I even noticed one of our signs there. It's, you know, it cites the laws, the state animal control laws on roaming, $92, and littering and everything, and the bottom it says, "Don't mess it up," you know, because the majority user, you know, of the, of the hiking trails are, you know, dog walkers, and most of them, I would say over 99% of them are respectful people. They carry leashes, they pick up after their animals. You know, we have bad elements everywhere in society, if you look at Veterans Park, you can see the vandalism there, you know, and I have to, last time I was here, I was speaking about the tennis courts, and I'm thankful that, you know, Jack Healy and the town actually are gonna be painting the lines this spring, you know, so I hope you guys will come out and join us when we get the opportunity to play again in Berlin, 'cause we're out in New Britain right now. And, and Jack was helpful and responsive to clearing the fields for the trails, because, you know, some of them just weren't cleared, you couldn't walk through them without getting, you know, tick infestations all over you. And he also reestablished again the bad element I spoke about, getting the bench on the area near the community gardens, pulling back up, because I guess there's some people that come in there and throw that bench down, you know, even though it's in concrete and everything.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, you know, what I'm saying here is there are a few bad elements, there are a few bad dog owners, maybe people that don't license their dogs, that may come from out of town, and even if you were to pass a restrictive ordinance, it probably wouldn't solve your problem, it would be hard to reinforce, to enforce as well. People may not be aware of it, but, you know, on the ordinance committee, I think there's some things you have to look at, like, I know you've made some strides with the All-Terrain Patrol, and I know they're not there all the time, and I know you've, should consider other things, like, a couple times I've noticed drones in there, and I don't know if you need to create a registry for the drones, or registry for the all-terrain vehicles for people that own these things in Berlin. I know we have a registry for our home alarm systems, you know, where we have to, you know, give information to the police and pay a fee in addition to our taxes. Now, speaking of taxes, I know you guys have been working hard this past week, you know, trying to create, you know, deal with the budget, and I know it's difficult when the governor is cutting $4.9 million to you, and not that much money's coming down from the federal government as well. And I know that we, you know, we have things that we haven't really solved, like how, how do we deal with the police station, you know? Maybe if we were to eliminate the indoor firing range, you know, maybe it would be more affordable. But I know in our street, one of my friends, Linda Miga, said, "Will you speak to them about when they're gonna pave our street?" And I says, "Well, you don't need to be an engineer or have a micrometer to see that it's only about a quarter inch thick." You know, it's not a major road, it's not Orchard Road, or Kensington Road, or Norton Road, but I didn't wanna get into all these side issues, I wanted to just say the majority issue, the majority user of the hiking trails are dog walkers, and we do bring leashes, and we don't really want a restrictive leash law, I think that the animal control state laws are sufficient right now. And in the past, I've served as the third president of the Responsible Dog Owners Group, and we've made efforts to be good examples and to engage in other dog walkers, to say, "Do you need a bag to pick up?" We've suggested that, you know, maybe we could take a donation like we did for the bridge for the Boy Scouts over the, you know, the Hatchery Brook, to, to fund it, to say, hey, you know, and, and we've always tried to talk to people about, you know, can you pick up after yourself and place it in the barrel? One of the things under the Salina administration is, that never got implemented, was bringing a parking area into Bicentennial Park, rather, like you have at the community gardens, to, so the people wouldn't be so much in the face of the people on Wine Sap Road that live there. I'm not sure where you live, Mayor Mark, but I know that I read in the paper that, you know, you ran into some issues with roaming dogs, I would hope you didn't come to any harm, and if there's any way I can help you out, volunteer, you know? But certainly, we don't think that, you know, you should pass a leash law. Few towns have that, that would, you know, curtail, you know, the work of all the founding fathers, from Doc MacIntosh, and Dr. Kachowski, and, you know, Jim Maloney, all the people, and, and I don't wanna forget about Dennis Kern, because he's done a lot of good work with the land trust in acquiring this, this land. And we spent a lot of time, and I, you know, if I were to serve in any way, it would be on a conservation commission, but I did point out to Michael...
We have an opening on the Conservation Commission.
Right, well, right now, I'm working on my taxes, and, and our 50th, our school, our 50th reunion's coming up, you know, and I'm just trying to find two more tennis players, 'cause everyone seems to play golf. I would rather walk the dogs...
Yeah, there you go.
...and take the courses, Wendy McGurgen up at Pistol Creek, you know, we've, I've taken five Goldens through her courses, and, you know, I just really wanna speak strongly against this leash ordinance, and I don't wanna say that we'll do this, but we might petition for a referendum to oppose it, because it would be very unpopular, very animal-friendly town, Berlin Fair, Bark in the Park, you know, Chick Day, you name it, I mean, that's coming up. So, you know, as we spring forward, okay, let's not take a misstep backwards here and get something that would be punitive to the majority user of the park because of a few bad elements. So I would just hope that the people on the ordinance committee, I know Charles is on it, Rachel, I don't know who else is on it, but I would hope that, you know, you would consider what I'm saying here tonight, 'cause we, we work very hard and appreciate the quality of those hiking trails, as good exercise, good socialization. I remember years ago talking to Mark Rutowitz, who's the Animal Control Officer in the Police Department in Simsburg, and he did the, he has his dogs there, and he had, he does the bear, when they catch the bears, they, they let them go in some other park, and now I think he's working with the veterans and dogs for PTSD. And just the other day, I ran into Dr. Shear's nephew, who was thinking of getting some dogs, you know, in the area, and for his kids. So, you know, we don't really wanna lose that privilege, I think Bloomberg Business Magazine cited Kensington as being the best quality of our population size in the nation because of all the things that we have here. So let's, let's not change anything, let's consider what we need to do and need to keep, and, and I'm willing to, to work with you on this in any way, but I don't wanna see any changes. I think what we have on the books is a state law, will suffice, it's the individual who's responsible for anything that their dog does or doesn't do, and I think it would be onerous for someone like Jan Lund, who's a terrific person, Animal Control Officer, to, to try to enforce something. I think it's impractical to enforce something like that throughout all the hiking trails, 'cause it would apply to the whole town, not just Bicentennial Park. So consider bringing a parking, as a solution, bring a parking area like the community gardens into Bicentennial Park to take the pressure off of the people that live in that area. I wouldn't, what they did was the Police Department put limited parking in that area, and sometimes when they have like a, an engagement party or a shower or something, the people visiting get a ticket, so, and Cross Creek Drive there, we don't have any restrictions, I'm not asking for any. And it's all for us to share and enjoy together, and it's great exercise, and, you know, you don't have to be Caesar Milan to know that it's very good for the dogs as well as us to get, we're talking about health, public health as well, as a public health dentist from 75 to 80 in New Britain. So buy the cookies, don't necessarily eat them, have fruits and vegetables, organic, and support things like the farmers' markets, and, and that's another thing I wanna say, is you have very restrictive agricultural policies here in town. I think you wanna make it easier for the farmers, their work is hard enough, easier for the farmers' market to operate. As far as chickens go, I think you should reduce that back to three acres as it is for all livestock, and just have either a no rooster rule, or have 10 acres for rooster. Okay, I've gotten on a lot of subjects here, I'm not running for office, I don't want to, but I wanna share my ideas with you, and please consider them seriously. Thank you.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you coming and sharing that, and, you know, as far as the, just the dog park and leash law, we do have an ordinance already, and we're just sort of taking another look at it. Certainly nothing's been decided, we really just are having conversations with people like yourselves, and we certainly encourage that, and that's what we want, we wanna hear from everyone, and we'll come up with, you know, some type of solution to this, and I mean, I think our ordinance might need to tweak a little bit, might need to enforce it a little bit better, but, you know, we haven't, I don't believe the ordinance committee, we certainly don't believe we're gonna take any drastic steps to do anything, you know, that should upset dog owners, I'm a dog owner myself, I love dogs, so I mean, I understand how that goes, so, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll look at that. The parking issue, just to mention that, I know we did, I was on planning zoning years ago, we did approve that parking lot there, but I, I'm not sure, we can go back and revisit that, or planning and zoning can, really, it's not in our purview to do that, but...
I did speak to Bruce Moore about some of this, but...
Yeah, it might be, it might have something to do with the, the park, with Bicentennial, the, you know, the restrictions in the park, we may not be able to put a parking lot on that property, I don't know, I know that was part of the issue, but...
Yeah.
...I don't know what happened to it after we approved it, I know it didn't obviously get done.
Didn't happen.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's something that planning and zoning could, could probably revisit, that might be a partial solution to some of the issues up there.
It's one of...
So we're kinda looking at all the different issues, and agricultural regs, they actually just passed some new ones, I know that it didn't, well, they were trying to take care of the farms, which I think they did, and the ones they just passed. I know the chicken issue, I think we sort of have relayed to planning and zoning to maybe look at that again, again, that's in their purview, and, and we'll see what they do, they do with that, but...
Is Michael DeLorenzo still head of conservation?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, yeah, great.
So, I mean, we appreciate, you know, all your input, and we probably will have a, probably won't, will not have an ordinance meeting again till April after we get through our budget season.
Good luck with that.
We have enough to do, but, you know, we'll have some more input, and we'll, we'll come up with some reasonable...
Well, you know, I've lived here, we've been paying taxes since 96.
Yeah.
And I'd like to live here another 20 years or more, I enjoy it here. You know, we're, we're talking about our taxes, you know, I'm there, "Wow, I'm paying about $1,200 a month, it's like almost $40 a day."
Yeah.
"I should say something," and my, and my neighbor's, Linda Miga, says, "Can you say something about the road?" You know, 'cause she's supposed to be paying $33 a day, you know?
Yeah, we got, our very able-bodied Public Works Director slash temporary town manager has a note about that road, we'll...
Okay, I appreciate it, all right.
We'll check that out.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to everybody, and...
Thank you.
Have a good night, and...
All right, you too.
...good luck with the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Anybody else in the audience of citizens? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to our meeting agenda, we'll start with our consent agenda. We have, I think, five, all right, yeah, five topics on that, if we, I, I know we've all read them, take a motion on those?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, we'll move on to our meeting agenda now. Take a motion to move Topic 6 to Topic 1?
Yeah, move to change the agenda item number 6 to be considered first on our agenda this evening.
Got a second on that?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, Topic...
Topic 6, which is our one.
Six, which is that one?
Uh, is to approve a three-year contract for medical software from DeVaro, Inc., in the amount of $34,440 for the year one, and subsequent years, $29,940 and, and $29,940 for year three. Linda Coelho is here to talk, to answer any questions.
So currently, we're using Bright Tree Medical Software, and I was notified by this company this current year that they will no longer be supporting laptops, effective 7/1/2017. So that would mean that we, all the clinicians would have to convert to iPads. So I did contact our IT department to get a cost analysis of what, what the current appraisal of our laptops are. We are currently have nine in use, we have three new ones, just in case one crashes, and, so that was a total of $31,980, and the iPads were $14,300. So just to maintain our relationship with Bright Tree, the equipment would have been a total of $46,280 plus their annual fee of $25,924. So an RFP was posted, figured, "Let's see what's out there." We had three bids, before we even started the demonstrations for the clinical and clerical staff, the Point Click Claire, one of the bids rescinded their bid. So we had two, DeVaro and Sandata, and, so we looked through the whole programs, and the staff, as well as the managers, did an evaluation score. DeVaro was 88.3, and Sandata was 59. DeVaro is an easy system to use, the training for clinicians are about, it's about 45 minutes, and they're out the door, so there's no downtime, no loss of productivity, and they have everything that we're used to right now. So DeVaro's cost is, for the first year, $34,440, and that's an 85, $8,000... And that's an eighty-five, eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollar increase. And that's due to implementation fees and training. And then it drops year one, year two and three. And year two and three, if Bright Tree didn't have an increase, would be approximately four thousand dollars more than we're currently paying. So, the additional eighty-five sixteen was included in the town manager's budget submission and the rest of the money is in our budget for fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Okay. Great. Take a motion on this? On the floor?
Move to approve a three-year contract for medical software with DeVaro Incorporated in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars for year one, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for year two, and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for year three.
Second on that for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Yes?
I have a couple of questions. One, I just want to clarify what the software is used for. Is this used for charting or what is this?
Yes. That's what we take in the home.
Okay.
So, all the documentation on the patients is done on this.
And this will be able, we'll be able to utilize existing laptops? We won't have to, or...
Correct.
Okay, so this is, the technology isn't leased through them? It's purely software?
No, we own the laptops. It's just using the software.
Okay.
It's a different software, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Linda. Okay.
Second item?
Yep.
The Park and Recreation Commission is requesting that the sixty-dollar Berlin Community Center Room rental be waived for the National Weather Service so they can run their SkyWarn training class.
That's interesting. Okay. A motion on this?
Move to approve fee waiver of sixty dollars for the Berlin Community Center Room rental fee Saturday, April eighth, two thousand seventeen for Rob Macedo and Glenn Field, National Weather Service, Taunton Mess, SkyWarn class.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
The third item is to approve a donation for a round of golf for four and two golf carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize for the Mary E. Griswold Parents' Club Pasta Supper to be held on Thursday, March thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The total donation value is two hundred and twenty-six dollars. John Zuck is here to answer your questions.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to approve a donation for a round of golf for four and two golf carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize for the Mary E. Griswold Parents' Club Pasta Supper to be held on Thursday, March thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Total donation value, two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Second? Okay, thank you. Any questions? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
The fourth item is to adopt an ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, and authorizing the issue of five hundred thousand dollar bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Jim Simon is here to answer any questions. Bill's on our bond council.
Yes, how you doing, Jim? How are you?
Okay, this is what we're in our public hearing, so motion on this?
Move to adopt an ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, and authorizing the issue of five hundred thousand dollar bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Item five is to waive the Town of Berlin purchasing requirements and purchase one two thousand seventeen Ford utility police interceptor from Tosca Ford as they now are the, as they are now the low bidder for the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars per vehicle, which is in the best interest of the town. Jim Simon is here to answer any questions.
Okay, motion on this?
Move to waive the Town of Berlin purchasing requirements and purchase one two thousand seventeen Ford utility police interceptors from Tosca Ford as they are the low bidder for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars per vehicle, which is in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
I'm just grateful that we're using a local dealership, somebody from Berlin, and that they were the low bidder, so that's exciting.
That's great. Okay, hearing no other questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
The sixth item is to authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fozzi LLC to prepare bond authorization documents for executing contracts, purchase, installation, and other related costs for the replacement of the Berlin Police Radio System and to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for Tuesday, March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM to hold a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating one million eight hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of the Berlin Police Radio System and authorizing the issue of one million eight hundred thousand dollars bonds for the town to meet said appropriation impending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes. And John Platt is here to answer any questions. I'm all with Joe Biden.
Okay, motion on this?
I move to authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fozzi LLC to prepare bond authorization documents for executing contracts, purchase, installation, and other related costs for the replacement of the Berlin Police Radio System and authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for Tuesday, March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM to hold a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating one million eight hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of the Berlin radio, Police Radio System and authorizing the issue of one million eight hundred thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Okay, second on this?
Second.
Questions? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
The seventh topic is presentation by the Madabasset District Fiscal Two Thousand Eighteen Budget. Arsene Monian, Executive Director, is here to discuss this year's fee schedule.
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome, Art.
Yes, thank you for having me back. It's been a while here, but I appreciate you coming back here. I have some handouts that I'll pass around. And with me is John Dunham from Berlin, our Chairman of the Madabasset Sewer District. And we're here to give you kind of a high-level overview of the Madabasset Sewer District budget. There's some budget notes that are going around with, along with some backup for the budget for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And just to touch on some of the highlights for everyone's benefit, I'm the Executive Director at Madabasset and the, the budget's based on really two things. One is what they call the five-year average flows for all the communities that participate. And the other part of the budget is based on the reserve capacity. And the reserve capacity that's assigned to each of the communities goes towards the calculation for capital assessment charges. So, even though the flows may reduce as time goes on, if there's a reserve capacity that's assigned, the capital parts of the budget get assessed based on that reserve capacity. New Britain being the largest community still has the largest flows, so they, as a result, pay the most significant part of the budget. And on that last page, looks like this on a landscape view, there's some highlighted numbers there. You can see from Berlin what those credits are doing, not only this year, but going forward. Berlin is set to receive about two point four million dollars in credits over the next seventeen, eighteen years. And you get those credits on your assessments that we calculate, so you don't actually see it in an actual physical check, but you'll see it in your assessments as they're calculated. And what we did this year to help out with some of the communities too as well is we increased that credit return rate, so it's coming back quicker to the communities. And the reason we did that is that Middletown has not yet brought their connection into the Madabasset District. Once they do, their flows will actually increase and that'll help lower the assessments to the other communities. So, while that's going on, while they're in the middle of constructing their thirty-million-dollar pump station, the board felt that was important to issue larger credits to help kind of soften that blow till they connect there. And that's why you see those four years highlighted. By year two thousand, fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we expect Middletown to join in and then that the assessments will be spread over a larger pie, so to say, a larger number of communities. The bottom-line numbers for Berlin are very good. On the first page, you'll see that the debt service, even though you're paying thirteen percent of debt service, your reserve capacity is fourteen point three, so you're paying less than your reserve capacity because of those credits that get applied each year from the Middletown buy-in. Our overall budget increase this year is about a one point one percent increase, which is on the next page. You'll see it highlighted near the top. The excluding capital electricity, it's one point four three, but the overall budget's one point one one. And our main budget drivers this year are electricity is going up quite a bit. We had a long-term contract and we've gone into a new contract as well, but we've actually, we just went out in the streets for an RFQ for energy performance contracts, which should hopefully help reduce our electricity and water and gas consumption in the future. Maybe some fuel cells or solar panels or some LED lighting in certain places. So, we're looking to do that. And if you look on the third, it's the third page, it's landscape view, it shows the community's assessments for fiscal year seventeen eighteen compared to sixteen, seventeen. Berlin's assessment is going up only sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars, is about a point oh nine percent increase. And again, we were able to use some of those reserve funds to offset those increases, which helps out over the next few years. You can see New Britons and Cromwells and what's going on with theirs. The reason everyone's percentages are different is because of the distribution between the five-year average flows and the reserve capacities and also the use of those reserve funds and those buy-in funds. So, that's why it affects it. But Middletown and MDC, MDC is actually shown on the next page, Middletown and MDC do not get credits back. Middletown obviously had to pay in, so they're not going to get a credit back. And MDC being not a charter member is not entitled to the credits back, so that was something the board looked to change just recently, actually, which helped the communities of Berlin, New Britain, and Cromwell. So, kind of a high-level overview, but I just wanted to give you kind of the basis of the budget and where things come from. We are still paying off our major nitrogen upgrade project. It's about a seventy-nine million dollar debt service over the next eighteen years. We provide numbers to Berlin. I see Ray here as well. We provide numbers to him for bond. When you guys go out for bonds as well, we provide some notes to help out with that. So, this year, I think we have five point four million dollars in our debt service line item for paying that down. That does come down slowly as each year goes by. But next eighteen years, we'll have that paid off. And the district did authorize using some additional reserve funds in this current fiscal year that we're in now that helped reduce that interest too as well, so we're saving about two million dollars in interest over the next eighteen years. So, that's it in a nutshell. And the key thing for Berlin is remember when Middletown does join in, that will help reduce the overall budgets to everybody. And with the additional funds that are coming back to Berlin and the other charter members, that'll help soften the blow over the next few years. So, we don't expect our budgets to increase dramatically when Middletown joins in. Our labor force will probably be the same. Our chemical electricity use may go up a little bit, but overall, it should help reduce our budgets. We did some initial estimates, should hopefully help with our revenues by about a one point five to two million dollars.
Okay, great. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Monian, I know we in Berlin had done a number of lining of our systems. How is that reflective in what we're actually being charged? Was there a reduction in our bill, so to speak?
Yeah, actually, if you look to the second page, which is, has a spreadsheet, it shows the, what they call the five-year average flows. And Berlin did that project, most of it was completed, I believe, in two thousand fourteen. And I know there's a second section Jack's probably working on here as well. But if you see as an example, Berlin, where it says the two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen average flows, your percent total flows was seventeen point five eight. If you go back to the column to the left where two thousand eleven to fifteen, your percent flows was eighteen point one. And if you go back two thousand ten to fourteen, your percent flows were eighteen point five eight. So, over the course of the last three, four years, those five-year averages are actually going down. So, as a result, somebody else ends up paying for that capacity as well. So, Berlin's numbers have actually gone down a little bit on their five-year average flows, which is helping your, the operating part of the budget. The reserve side essentially stays the same, but I would say that you're definitely benefiting from the projects that you did, the aligning project and I think it was about a three-and-a-half million dollar project back then. So, it'll take some time to obviously see the full benefits, but you can see here that it's definitely making an impact.
Are these measured flows or estimated flows?
These are actually meter flows. We actually have meter connections on the Berlin Turnpike at your main pump station and then the other ten pump stations, there's actually meter flows that we measure monthly. So, these numbers are fairly accurate, as accurate as the meters are, obviously, but they are taken every month and we go into a spreadsheet here and compile all the data.
And those flows to those locations are a hundred percent of Berlin's operation or is there others that are going through there also?
There's a pump station on, I know, Demming Road that does pick up some flows from MDC. We actually have meter stations with MDC as well and those flow, those numbers are backed out of their assessments. But I know there's probably some impact to your pump station in terms of maintenance and I believe you have an RFP or you actually probably already have someone on board looking at that. So, so the impact to that pump station in terms of maintenance, I would suggest you, you know, look further into that with MDC. But the assessments for the cost operate in Madabasset, we already do subtract that out and charge MDC for their proportional share and subtract that from Berlin's share.
So, we can actually measure what goes through there and assign that to...
Correct. Yeah, you could actually see that from these numbers here as well. And I've shared numbers both with Ray and then Jack as well. There's some spreadsheets for the last five years that we shared already.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? No? All right, well, thank you, Art.
No action.
For the information.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate you coming back too as well. Still smiling, so, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you. Hey, thank you for a great bridge too, by the way.
No worries.
Huh? It's a beautiful bridge.
Okay, the next topic is to authorize the temporary town manager or town manager to enter into an amended grant agreement per the attached resolution appropriating ten thousand five hundred dollars at local property owner match for the State of Connecticut Brownfield Assessment Grant to revenue account, other receipts, and to expenditure account Brownfield Assessment Grant, Woodlawn and Demming Roads. Appropriate the thirty-five thousand dollar State of Connecticut Brownfield Assessment Grant for Woodlawn and Demming Roads to the revenue account, state and federal grants, and expenditure account, environmental assessment, Woodlawn and Demming Roads, and waive the bidding process in the best interest of the town and authorize the, should be temporary town manager to enter into the, in agreement with Ty and Bond to conduct additional environmental investigations at five eighty-six Demming Road per the attached scope of work for a fee not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars economic development. Chris Edge is not here tonight. He did give me a letter.
Yeah.
Explain if you have any questions regarding, regarding this.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's make a motion and then we'll... Go ahead.
Move to authorize the temporary town manager, town manager entering to, excuse me, the temporary town manager to enter into amended grant agreement per the attached resolution. Appropriate the ten thousand five hundred dollars local property owner match for the State of Connecticut Brownfield Assessment Grant to revenue account, other receipts, and to expenditure account, Brownfield's Assessment Grant, Woodlawn and Demming Roads. Appropriate, appropriate the thirty-five thousand dollars State of Connecticut Brownfield Assessment Grant for Woodlawn and Demming Roads to revenue account, state and federal grants, and expenditure account, environmental assessment, Woodlawn and Demming Roads, and waive the bidding procedures in the best interest of the town and authorize the town manager enter into an agreement with Ty and Bond.
Temporary town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Authorize the temporary town manager enter to an agreement with Ty and Bond to conduct additional environmental investigations at five eighty-six Demming Road per the attached scope of work for a fee not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Second on that?
Second.
So, questions? I just, so, I know we're keeping the same company, right?
Yes.
To do the work because they had already been involved.
Yeah.
That's why we're...
It's an environmental consulting firm. And if you ask them, if you ask another consulting firm to come in, what they're going to say is they can't necessarily rely on the previous information, so what they're going to do is insist on doing additional studies. So, it's, it's really in the best interest of the town to be consistent and stay with the consultant unless there's a real reason to change.
Good. Good. Any other questions? Good, any other questions?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand the format. I'm in favor of accepting the state money and probably supporting this item, but we're going to get taxpayers' money from the state was granted to the town, and the town's going to spend that money on private property. And then is the private property landowner who's getting the benefit of this investment, is he liable to return that to the taxpayer at any point?
They're actually, the homeowner is actually providing matching funds toward this study.
Right.
It's one of the things that Chris did know.
The property owner will match the funds, but the thirty-five thousand dollars of state money being spent on his property is just his gain, and that's how the system works.
Well, the money goes to the consultant.
I would say it's similar to the Streetscape grants that we do, where we provide taxpayer money to companies, private owners, to improve their locations, their stores, think of Subway. That was a grant that was offered to them, they matched that, so it's a, it's a similar concept.
Like the facade program.
The facade, yeah.
Because the streets say if we own a street.
Right.
I just want to understand that that's a good deal for the property owner. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Dave?
Yeah, just a question, and I think I'm looking at it, and I thought I'd seen it, but it says that the, that they're, it's a not-to-exceed value of thirty-five thousand, and that they're going to do it on an hourly plus expense basis, and that the, they provided hourly rates there. Did those rates change is kind of the question? If we're just continuing, or are they saying, okay, well, our, it's the rates presented, but now our rates went up a hundred percent, or they went up twenty percent, or was there any comparison to previous rates on that?
That I don't know, Dave. They did a comparison. I have to go back and look.
I don't think, so I don't have the rates here to do any rationalization of this. So it's certainly a not-to-exceed, but if, if there could be some further investigation into that and, and to ensure that those rates were consistent and not inflated unnecessarily. And I can understand the not-to-exceed, but I'd certainly like to have staff scrutinizing when they're authorizing a payment that it's not an, not an unreasonable rate change.
Okay, anything else?
No.
There are nothing else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved, thank you. So we are, remember, nine.
Item nine, approve, requesting to transfer seven thousand eighty-six dollars from the contingency account to the highway truck rental account for snow plowing miscellaneous streets and cul-de-sacs for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen winter season. And I'm here to answer the questions.
Okay, we'll have a motion.
Move to approve a transfer of seven thousand eighty-six dollars from the contingency account to highway truck rental account for snow plowing miscellaneous streets and cul-de-sacs for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen winter season.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Questions?
Yeah, just have a question, Mr. Healy, on this. Was there, you know, to some extent, the amount of snow removal from previous years has been a little bit less this year. Did we run into a situation where we set up to use two different accounts for the two different suppliers? What drove this? Are we, are we trying to use them equally? Are we managing them? Is there any, anything that would have driven that, other than just more snow than, than expected in the budgeted amount?
Well, there hasn't been more snow, but what there is, is when you have a winter like this, if you have small storms, you go out as frequent, you go out and you have to sand and salt. They're not really used, I wouldn't say they're used balanced-wise, if they've got roots that they've established for them before, and they do those roots. Now, one of them did not show up for one of the, one of the storms. We did go back and check, and they were not paying for that, and the other one had to cover that. But that didn't, that's not the reason for the overage. The reason for the overage is the amount of work that they have done, and they, and they, I did go back and request of, I had one request to make sure that somebody was checking on them, and our, our highway garage superintendent does go out and check on them. But the reason for the request is that we are over expended in that account, we are expended right now by three thousand eighty-six dollars. And I asked that, all we do is we estimate what we think, if there's any more storms, what would we go over? If we are fortunate, we have no storms or very few storms, we will not expend more than three thousand eighty-six dollars. But I didn't want to come back to the, I don't like to come back more than one time. And then again, next year, we'll go out for, we'll go out for bids, and we'll see at that time if we can get better, better rates, or get two different contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved, thank you. Ten.
Okay. This one is, a presentation on repair alternatives concerning the Kensington Dam and Railroad Pond Dam. And again, I'm here to present that. I included in your pack, you know, we've talked, I've talked to you several times about the dam and the need for to repair or remove it. We have, we have had a inspection this year, and once again, this year, during the inspection, the dam's deficiencies were identified, and we are required by the State of Connecticut to, to repair the dam. I issued a letter back to the State of Connecticut in February, end of February, early March, stating that we had done this, we were in the process of doing this evaluation to determine which the, which option we would, the council would like to pursue. I also, we also had Maki Engineering do an evaluation, determine what the cost comparison would be, and if there was a relative advantage to one over the other. The good thing was is that at one point, we had two point five million dollars that decided to do this project, and both estimates came in at less than one point three million dollars. So to start, it looks that we, you know, that was a, you know, the evaluation was good to determine the amount of money we needed to do it. The, to repair the dam is about a hundred thousand dollars less than, or excuse me, repair the dam is about a hundred thousand dollars more than to remove the dam. I also asked to have someone give me an evaluation of what, what would happen to the home values in the area of the dam, and the homes that are adjacent to the, to the, to the water would see a depreciation of about ten thousand dollars in their, in their, on their evaluation of the property, the value of the property. I also asked the Historic Society, I included this in your, in your package, to do a historic review of the dam, determine what is background. If you want to remove a dam, you're required to do a historic study, so I figured, I thought at this time, I asked Lorraine Stubbs, she generously granted and said she would do the study, I've included in there. It was interesting reading, I didn't fully understand before, you know, why the dam was there, I couldn't figure out why we located where it was, it was, it was interesting reading. So to make the long and short of it, we're at the point, oh yes, one other thing, as part of the evaluation, we had to take sediment samples behind the dam. And I didn't, I don't believe I gave you all the information, because the sediment data is rather voluminous, and it's, you know, unless you're an engineer, sort of boring. So, you know, we like reading that stuff, but anyway, there are SBOCs above the residential exposure criteria, and also above the indirect exposure criteria. That being said, if either, if you, if you remove the dam, you'd have to remove all the sediment. That's, that's sort of a variable, and if you, you know, if you ask me what I thought, that's, that's wide open, I, you know, you're, you're, unless, we would have to go out and take a lot of samples, you draw a grid, and you just, you would sample, 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 determine what the, what the data was, you know, what the, what the constituents were in the sediment. So that is one big negative about taking the dam out. I mean, the positive is, is you take the dam out, the liability goes away, and we don't, we no longer have to do inspections, we don't have the potential for the dam to fail. Now, the dam is, even in the condition, it's in no danger of failure, it's in good, it's, you know, it's a sturdy dam, it's been in for a long time. At this point, it's really, and I think that the residents in the area probably would prefer to see the dam remain, and I think that's something that the council would probably use, probably get a lot of feedback, that people would like to see it remain. I know the historic district would like, you know, they, they obviously, Lorraine, I talked to Lorraine, she was very much like, you're not going to take it down, I said, well, no, I'm just looking at the, you know, doing the comparison, but I think I have to present the options to the council. So that's where we are, I don't know that you need to take any action tonight, if you, you know, if you want to go back, read the information. I have sent to the state saying that we will, that we will start taking some action during the summer, and there are some relatively inexpensive things that we could do while the council, you know, decides what they would like to do. I know that we have, that Kevin and I have talked several times about when we would put, when we need the, the money to do the dam. I believe that we're looking at trying to hold off and bond, not bond this to the fall. And, and so, again, I don't believe we need to take any action tonight, read it, and if you have any more questions, we could talk about it, and at some point, we could, I would ask you to make it sooner.
Jack, have anyone reached out to the residents, particularly those that border the north side of the, I went driving by there tonight, I noticed a lot of piers and a couple of houseboats and, you know, local, you know, small stuff, so they'd be affected.
They would, and that's why I think there's a ten thousand dollar, no, I haven't gone to them yet, I really wanted to get to this point before I go out there and start talking. I think that that's, that's something you have to do if we decided to change, if you decide to do anything other than to repair the dam. If you decide to remove the dam, then we'd have to go through that process of talking to each resident. If we're just going to repair it, it doesn't really impact us.
And as I read that report, it was just the very top that we'd have to repair, right?
Right, well, the top in the, in the front, the front face, if you go down to standard, you will see effervescence, you will see where the water's actually starting to come through the dam.
Yeah.
It needs to be, you know, refaced, and we have to remove the, we have to go on the backside, we have to draw the water down, and also fix, fix the backside of the dam. We've got to look at some, we got to check the pipe to make sure that the pipe is in good condition, so it's going to be a relatively, you know, it would be a project that would take a while, and one of the things that we have talked amongst ourselves, Jim Mahoney, Chris, myself, Jim Horrible, is that if we do, one of the things is this, this waterway is actually underutilized by the town. It's a, it's a pond sitting there, there's no recreational services to it. So it's one of the things, and I did this before on a project we did in a previous town, is we're going to have to make entrance ways into this, this pond. What I would say is at the end of this, we actually improve those and make this pond more accessible so that people can utilize it.
We need a vote launch.
Well, you make, make it accessible for residents to use, because right now, it's an underutilized, you know, facility, if you decide to.
If, if we fix it, what's the timeframe?
It would probably take, it would take a summer. What I would propose, we would do it during a summer season.
So one year to fix it?
Yeah.
Or, but then, so how long does it last after that?
Well, the last time you fixed it was thirty-five years ago.
Okay, the, the same type of repair?
It was a similar repair, yeah.
Thirty-five years?
It's been a long time.
Yes, it is.
We do exercise, we, we, one of the things we had to do that we found wasn't being done over the past few years is, we have to do internal inspections now. So Brian Griswold does go out on a quarterly basis, inspect the dam, he also inspects the paper goods dam also now, and we exercise the valve to make sure that the valve, you don't want to be in a situation where you need the valve to work and it doesn't work, so we exercise the valve now on a regular basis.
That's good to know, yeah. I, I think that, I mean, we should, you know, could obviously think about this some more, I don't think we need to make a hasty decision tonight. And I also think we do need to talk to the residents, I think we should, you know, let them know this is our options, maybe we'll get them into, you know, make sure they're, they know about it, you know, maybe one of our council meetings, or if we have to do a special meeting, whatever we think. Get them in, explain it to them, see what they have to say, because I would like to hear what their thoughts are before we go anywhere, yeah.
If, I don't know what's the best option at this point, but if we did drain it, could we annex some of the pond land area to the adjacent owners to offset their loss? Is that feasible?
I think if you look to see what Lorraine wrote, it said that that was donated land from Marjorie Moore, so I don't know if it becomes a land situation like the Knights of Columbus, but she wanted it to be recreational use, but certainly something to, I don't know.
I was thinking now you're going to have land, and it's adjacent to your yard, if they did suffer a loss, maybe you could offset.
Well, one of the things I thought.
If it's restricted, that won't work.
Now, the stream would still go through, there obviously.
Oh, yeah, the stream would still go through.
The stream being in the middle, yeah.
And one of the things I thought of originally, until, until Lorraine did her research, my thought was it'd be like a road where you would actually, you take the building of the land and you split it, give it to, to the properties on both sides, but when Lorraine sent me the information, I think that, the way the agreement reads, that prohibits that.
Sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, just, to Mr. Rossell's point is, it sounds like there'd be some level, you'd have to, to repair it, you'd actually have to drain it down a little bit, and I think we'd want to notify the residents that that's happening, so whether we replace it or we repair it, I think either way, we'd want to certainly give them notice of what's going on, I mean, written letters to their home, rather than just, hey, your pond's going to be dropping in the newspaper.
Yeah.
And, you know, with respect to, you know, reduced property values, then, then that has a potential impact on the amount of assessed value that has a monetary value that, that could come into the equation, that we may want to look at the, the possible loss of, you know, if we're trying to compare options here, you'll see that, that could have some potential reduction in value to it also, so those are just a couple of thoughts I had.
Okay, so maybe we start with however we want to notify the residents, just so, you know, again, after the budget season, we can maybe start by letters perhaps, and, and ask them to come to a meeting, I don't know if we want them in a council meeting, special meeting, council meeting, whatever, whatever you guys think.
Not special meeting.
Just special meeting, so we can do a special meeting, and we'll pick a date, you know, maybe, I don't know, April sometime, we'll have to figure out a date, get a letter out to them, and, you know, we could give them a copy of this, you know, and let them look at it, and just see what they.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that makes sense, because it'll demonstrate that we are looking at it, we're taking, I mean, we definitely want to talk to them as, whether we move with, forward with either, either option. Now, Mr. Healy, you said something about bond offering timeframe would be in the fall, and that could certainly, that would certainly impact this upcoming budget that we're considering, so I think we need to make sure that we highlight any of those numbers associated with that in this upcoming budget, and see if there's any timeframes that, you know, what would be a reasonable timeframe, if it, if it didn't come off with this budget, what future budget might make sense for it to apply to.
Absolutely, I believe Kevin has prepared several different options on that, looking at when is the best time to, to do, to do the work and finance the work, so.
Is there a lead time on a state permitting?
The state actually would want us to do it as soon as we could, and that's why I've sent them a letter saying that we're not planning on doing, we've done this study. And when I spoke to the DEEP about that, told me they'd done this study, they were actually very happy, like, they said, most people don't even go this far this early, so they were happy that we've done this to this point, so I'll keep them up to, I'll keep them abreast of what our, what our progress is.
Great, thank you. So we'll, we'll pick a date, some point, maybe at the next meeting, get some dates and get a, get our homeowners in here. Does that make sense, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Item number eleven.
Yep.
Authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fozzie LLC to prepare bond authorization documents in the amount of four million dollars for the Town of Berlin Road Improvement Program, and authorize the temporary town manager to schedule and advertise to hold a public hearing on March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M. on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating four million dollars for the Town of Berlin Road Improvement Program, and authorizing the issue of four million dollar bonds to the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, and making a temporary borrowing for such purpose. And again, I guess I'm here to answer the questions.
Great. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fozzie LLC to prepare bond authorization documents in the amount of four million dollars for the Town of Berlin Road Improvement Program, and authorize the temporary town manager to schedule and advertise to hold a public hearing on March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M. on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating four million dollars for the Town of Berlin Road Improvement Program, and authorizing the issue of four million dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question?
Yeah?
This is basically a continuation, we had six million approved a few years ago, and we spent another million a year, so this would cover two more years?
Yes. This is for two, this is for two years. What I, what I, what we're doing is we are working to each year do between five and six miles of roads. This year, we have five point four, I have about five point four nine miles of roads to be done, but that includes, we had three roads that were on last year's list that we did not finish, Coal Lane, Winchell Drive, and Woodruff Lane, and then in addition, there's another four point five miles of roads, and these are listed on the town website if you want, I can read them, but otherwise, they're on the town website.
My question was, we wouldn't bond all that money this year, it'd be half and half, or how?
It's one million fifty thousand is what I think Mr. Delaney had indicated to me for this current fiscal year's budget. It's one million fifty thousand is what I think Mr. Delaney had indicated to me for this current fiscal year's budget.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Okay, make a motion to add, uh, agenda item twelve?
Move to add agenda item number twelve.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve. Number twelve, um, requesting the town council, um, approve a design modification and request for funds to, um, add items, benches and canopies, wind screens, maintenance gate and glass backboards to the Berlin High School tennis court project. Um, ten thousand of that is, is, you accepted a gift. Ten thousand of that is, that ten thousand dollar gift is, um, was donated for the benches and canopies. The other item, well, I'll leave it at that. Motion on this?
Move to approve additional design modifications at the Berlin High School tennis and basketball courts in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions?
I just have a question on the sense of, um, is this for design cost or this would also pay for the, um, things that they're considering? Adding the benches and canopies and wood screens and maintenance gate and blackboards, making them glass?
These are all for those units. The design, the designs are done. This is for the physical pieces that I've identified.
Okay, that makes good sense, rather than that much for design of that. I wouldn't be floored to pay that much for that, so, thank you.
Okay, uh, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
May I, may I ask that you go back to item number?
Yes.
Five?
Five.
For a friendly amendment, that the second time the town manager is mentioned to add in temporary town manager language prior to that?
Sure, yes.
Five, which was?
It was the real five or?
Uh, five?
The original five?
The original five.
Original five.
Yeah, original five.
Sorry.
Okay.
But was on the ordinance.
Yes, that has been amended, so amended. Will a vote to amend that?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Aye.
There you go. Okay, we're good. We're good, Kate?
Yeah, everybody say yes?
Yes, aye, 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 yes, we're all good.
Thank you. We have other people doing these motions sometimes, huh?
We're good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, appointments, we have two. We have one for the commission for persons with disabilities. Um, pick a nomination on this?
I'm getting there. Like to nominate, uh, Robert Dombrowski for a commission for the persons with dis, disabilities.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Harry None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, and Robert does a great job on that commission. He is chairman of it, so welcome back to Robert. Um, the second one is Alex. Oh, you Italians, how do we say that last, how do we say that last name?
Genon.
Genon? Okay, good, thank you for that. I am half Italian, but I guess the Polish side came too, I couldn't say. All right, so, uh, I talked to Alex a couple of times. I had a, a nice conversation with him on a couple of different days, today being the last day I spoke to him. And he, you know, he's an attorney, he's got quite an impressive resume. He's interested in, he's obviously a state trooper as well. Uh, was a local policeman in Newington before he joined the state police, so he's got quite a good background. And he's interested in, uh, you know, serving the town, volunteering, so, uh, we, we, just, he was interested in the, because it just came up in his, on alternate, uh, planning and zoning. And I thought with his legal background, um, that would probably suit him well. And as an alternate, he would have a lot of time to, uh, to kind of get up to speed and learn some things. And I'm sure, um, uh, the town planner and, uh, Bruce Moore would help him get acclimated. So he was interested in that, so.
But, isn't this for Board of Ethics?
Yeah, I, but I spoke to him today, so he, we-
So he's not doing planning and zoning?
Yes, he's gonna do planning and zoning, that's what he wants to do, yeah, yeah. We're doing a, well, an audible here, verbal, verbal change, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we talked about all the different ones and I said, you know, what do you think? So, he said that would be more suited to him, so I said, okay. So anyway, nomination, did I get a nomination?
Like to nominate Alex Genon to the Planning and Zoning Commission as alternate.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Harry None, all?
Can I just say, he gets my vote just for the effort into this cover letter.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, no doubt, he's very, very impressive guy to speak to, too. Nice guy, too, very nice guy, young guy, you know, interested in service to the town. So anyway, that's great. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome, Alex.
Thank you.
Uplucky him or maybe unlucky him as he finds out on planning and zoning? He'll find out, maybe the hard way. Uh, town manager's report.
I'd like to highlight, um, for the last, uh, last two weeks, the housing trust, we've come, we think we've come to an agreement between us and the DEP and, uh, on a, renting, gonna rent them the piece of property for a dollar. Uh, DEP did, it seems to have accepted the, the proposed, so they, I know that, uh, so Jennifer Capula is working on the agreement right now. And so it appears that that has come to a resolution.
Good, yeah.
Uh, at the last meeting, you asked about the mobile home park. I met with Joe Bajorzki, uh, and the housing authority has some interest in, in, in the mobile home park. So I'm, we're doing some research right now on the agreements, um, and, and the values of those, we are proceeding, looking into that. Um, I, most times I don't, I would ask you to just read the report, but there's one thing I would like to highlight, I think that you need to know. The Farmington Avenue Bridge, um, you may wonder why it's taking so long.
Yep.
And, and to, to be honest, um, what's happening is there's contamination under the bridge. And, um, and so I have asked Steve Wosniak to get involved to protect the town's interest and to see whether or not we need to have environmental indemnification. Um, that being said, this, that would only come, we'd only need that if the state decides not to partake in, in, as they would normally with the, the bridge, they would contribute, uh, that we get ninety percent from the state and the feds, we put in ten percent. At this point, they haven't accepted that they're partially responsible for the contamin, not that they're responsible for the contamination issue. But one of the arguments we have is that they didn't do all of the normal sampling you would do before a project. So, this probably would have been picked up if they'd done the sampling. Um, so anyway, we're going back and forth. We are continuing with, with the project. It's not being held, it's not being held. It was delayed because of that. It is ongoing. But, um, I've asked Steve Wosniak to ask our, um, to ask him to go down to the meeting and to get our insurance company involved to protect us on that. The other thing is, there's a, an old abutment that nobody knew about that goes, uh, uh, basically goes under the ground toward the house on Farmington Avenue, one of its closest. Um, that being said, we can't put the new abutments in because it's in the way. And so that's another one that was not picked up in the due diligence ahead of, ahead of schedule, ahead of the project. Um, and I, I went to the meeting today. I have asked, I'm in contact with DOT, asked them to also participate in that. We haven't got affirmation that they will. I think they will, but we're not sure yet. If they don't, we do have other avenues for helping us fund that old bridge. So I'm, I'm looking at, at those other alternatives too. That would include our insurance company, but that would look for those who should have done the background checks earlier. They may have to get their insurance companies involved. So I just want to bring you up to date on that because, you know, you may get questions from people in town, why that's going on.
Got a bunch of questions, yeah.
So you can answer that now.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, the main street project, another one you probably will get some questions on. Um, we have money, uh, street, uh, street money that we are looking out right now to get a consultant in to continue on with the project we had last year. But as part of that, we want to go back and look at what we did previously and, and modify it, as I, I talked to the council last fall about. I've met with, uh, we, again, we met today even with some more, uh, other vendors. And we're going to work with them on, on how to maybe modify the streetscape some so it's, there's additional parking, it's more conducive to their businesses. I also spoke with a contractor today and there are, obviously there are punchless items that you normally would have in a project. Uh, the sidewalk that's going across the main street has, has sunk a little bit. And I asked them to start on April first. I don't want to really start much before that. Uh, you have to worry about frost heaving and things like that, so I've asked them to start March first to correct the punchless items.
April first.
Again, that's, so if you get questions, that's where we stay.
Okay.
Um, interesting thing I did, uh, last week, I met with Ron Lindgren. And the only reason I bring this up is, he's, he's on the cemetery committee. And the reason I talk to them is, they don't meet. The reason they don't meet is they don't have any money. And so I got a tour of all the town cemeteries last week, which was actually very, for, for a person, his father's a history teacher, it was very interesting to me to go around and see all these. That being said, I, I think that, and I've talked to Ron, and I'd, I'd like to at some point, look at some way of trying to help, give them, get them some funds, because your, the gravestones are being damaged and you're losing part of your town history. And so I think that, you know, I'm trying to work with Ron to see the ways of how we can, you know, facilitate. I, we may talk with the, you know, the upbeat group or something like that to try to help and things like that. But it's very interesting to go, if you haven't had a chance to go around, there's some tucked there. I would have never have looked, so it was interesting going around.
How about with the, um, historical society? Is there any connection between the two, that commission, those commissions?
There's a connection, again, the promise is like four hundred dollars to, to do the work.
Yeah.
You can't fix one stone for four hundred dollars. And, and there's a lot of stones that are, are being damaged. They'd have to be selective. Um, a lot of the older stones are made out of, are softer, so the, there was just weathering and things like that. But, but there's overgrowth on the fences, the gates are, you know, so that's the type of thing, you know, maybe we could get the upbeat kids involved and maybe we could start to help.
Well, we also have a capstone in Boy Scouts, maybe we can reach out.
Eagle Scout.
There's been some scout, Eagle Scout projects that actually did some of the stepping stones in one of the locations.
Yeah. I will tell you, it's an interesting ride around. Now, would it, would it make sense, uh, to combine that committee with the historic district or no? I mean, Dave, I know you're on the historic district. I know, I know they're, they got different purposes, but it is history. I don't, I don't know if that would, it's a subcommittee of that, would that make sense? Because I know they don't, uh, they've lost some of their members recently too, right? I think the cemetery committee only has-
Yeah, well, one of the reasons they lose the members is they don't meet.
Right.
And, and that's been, the reason they don't meet is because if they meet, there's no money to do it, it takes a while to meet.
And it's a fairly recent commission, and I think someone came forward and we added the commission, probably not that long ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, five, seven, yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, I don't know. I think, I think, I believe some other towns have done that, but I, I don't really know how that would work. I know the historic district is, you know, obviously Worthington Ridge, but what do you think that, I mean?
Well, on that, I would just say that if it's a funding discussion, it's, I guess the first time I've heard it that it's a, a funding issue. So, you know, if, if, if we're looking at it as utilizing certain resources at the town for minutes or whatever paper or whatever they're looking to do for that part of it, maybe there's some synergies there. But I'm not, you know, sure on this and maybe, uh, we could turn to Corporation Council. We could look into it, whether it's charter driven or it's ordinance driven to make such a change. Um, or if it's at the state level, that, that we'd have to take a look at. Um, but beyond that, if there's something that's, we want to look at as we go into budget, continue our budget sessions, whether there's some, uh, even estimated amounts, they think, that would make it worth the while to, to have that commission meet. If that's really the issue, then let's, let's talk about that also. Pursue two different avenues here.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of different issues, obviously. I mean, could we combine something like that?
Not really, because it's by, your charter tracks the state statute.
Yeah, okay. So it needs to remain?
It should be separate. If you wanted to have a joint committee, just for that issue, you certainly could do that, if you think it's necessary.
All right, well, well, uh, so, w- we don't know what you talked about, the, the funds of it, that would be necessary to do some of the work. We don't really know.
I don't have, it was very preliminary. Again, it was, I got a tour around, um, we looked at them and, and, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet up with Ron again and just keep the conversation going.
All right.
The last thing-
Yeah? The town owns these cemeteries, correct? Not churches or?
Right, these are town owned cemeteries.
And we're committed to eternal ma, eternal maintenance of them. Do we have the right to actually work on each headstone? I know, I got involved in moving some graves and it was a nightmare. You had to contact the church and the family and the pope. And do we have the right just to go in and restore certain stones or how does it work?
I don't know the legality. Ron has indicated, they, they showed me some of the stones that they have repaired. I don't know that, you know, he's, they've done a few of the stones, they showed me how they fixed them. So I think that's a couple of homework that probably they did follow up on.
I'm all for it, I just didn't know the legality.
Again, this is preliminary talks, I'd like to just continue the dialogue with Ron to see, you know, what is the, Dave's point, to see what kind of funds are necessary.
All right, that's important.
I guess the last thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the Worthington Ridge. Um, there's a house behind the Worthington Meeting House, Esther Woodruff. Um, Jeff and I met with the, with the family. And, uh-
I don't know that.
We met with the family and the family, um, is interested in selling the house and has, has offered the town the, the first refusal. And I just want to bring that up. It's something for you to consider. I vented to the family. Ethics, okay, I'll do that too. Um, I did vent to the family, I would bring it up in, in my report today, not, not, with no intention of having any action, but I wanted to bring it to the council's attention. We have met with them. Um, that it's the house, if you go to the back of the meeting house, it's the one that's probably closest. It's a very nice old, uh, it's an old house. It's a, we, Jeff and I had a nice meeting with the family there a couple of weeks ago.
Is it atta, is it adjacent to the meeting house property?
Yeah.
And how much, how, what is, what, how big is the property?
It was about four acres.
Oh, it's big.
The entire parcel, right?
Yeah.
That might solve your parking problem, Dave.
Yeah, that's pretty helpful. I said, it's directly behind it, so you really can't see it as you drive along because the whole meeting house covers that house.
The property stretches to the turnpike, right? It does, it stretches down to the turnpike, yeah. It's a, it's a long, relatively narrow piece, yeah.
Did they mention their value?
They, they had a market analysis that was done. But they provided us, I, not a copy, but they let us look at it.
Yeah. So I want to bring it to your attention for future consideration.
Okay.
And, okay, thank you, Kate. The ethics policy, yes. Um, Kate did a lot of homework on this, um, and she's gone through and seen, and determined who, who has signed their ethics policy, who's not. We have a list of that. Uh, she and I have talked, uh, a couple of times, um, and we also checked with our, with our, our-
Labor attorney.
Labor attorney, and, um, he, he essentially said that we should, we, we can go out and we should, and in looking at the ethics policy, we're supposed to do this, send out reminders, um, telling people who have not signed it to please sign it and, and ask all, all people, all the employees who are, who pertains to, to sign, to acknowledge they've received it and to complete it, along with people on commissions and mores, so. We're going to proceed with writing a letter and requesting, you know, as a reminder, it'll be, it'll be, you know, ask people to sign it and then return it to us.
My analyst?
We're not, we're not saying-
That's a problem.
We'll take care of that. There may be some of us up there that are on, maybe, yeah, yeah.
We're not identifying anyone.
So, so there's no issue with, um, because remember, I think we heard union issues at one point?
We sent Kevin Wright on, on an email and he essentially told us to go ahead and proceed with, with sending a letter out.
Okay, all right, well, so that's great. Let's, we should wrap, you know, we need to kind of bring that to a conclusion, so.
It has to be done on a yearly basis.
Yeah, once a, once a year, right? You're gonna have people acknowledge that they-
Yep, now, they see that, they get the, um, ethics policy and then that they, um, if they have any purchasing authority, that they, um, do the financial statement update. And also within the policy, there's certain positions that identify that they have to do the, uh, financial statement, like board of assessment appeals, you know, some, there are certain ones, the assessor, the revenue collector, they're identified as, as having to do this.
So all, all the boards and commissions?
No.
No, right, just the, just the certain ones that have-
Yeah, and it's mainly elected officials.
Yeah, of course.
So it's all elected officials and then it's certain ones that have been identified within the policy.
Okay.
And then it's all, um, department heads that have purchasing authority.
Okay, right, yeah.
Now, I will tell you that the top managers, hundred percent, but it was the other ones that were kind of, you know. But everyone has to sign saying that they have received that ethics policy.
Right, it's really just a acknowledgement that they received it. I mean, that's the basis of it. But, okay, well, it's, that's great. I appreciate you following up on that and doing the work.
It's been on the burner and the Council Evans, thank you for bringing it up because we've been going back and forth on it. So I appreciate that. Is it something that should be addressed?
Yeah, I mean, we went through all the trouble of-
Exactly.
Getting our, you know, getting the policy- getting our, you know, getting the policy done, which was started a long time, a while ago, so that's great. Good, all right, so, proceed and send it, send it out. Great. That's it?
Yep.
Thank you. Special committee reports, what do we have? Yes?
Reminder tomorrow and the next day, starting 6 o'clock, in the Board of Education's meeting room. Tomorrow we'll be starting with economic development, Public Works Highway, Public Building, and Water and Sewer, for those that are looking forward to joining us there tomorrow.
That's tomorrow?
Yes, and then on Thursday.
Thursday, there's more.
Get excited about the police, the school expenses, including the crossing guards, community services, recreation, and public grounds.
Awesome.
Great.
Very exciting week.
Yeah. And there's more next week, too, even, even better.
And the weekend?
Yeah, yeah, even better.
That's a very glamorous job we have here.
Yes, it is. Certainly worth the paycheck. So, what, what else? Any other committees? I really don't have any. All right, Counselor Communications, what do we have? Yes?
I just want to say thank you to the, the two officers. We received that report in our inbox about two of our officers using Narcan to save someone's life. I just want to say thank you to them for, for doing this, and, you know, it's a lifesaving thing, and it's important, so.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it's, what I found most disturbing, you know, that's, obviously, thanks for that training, but was the, a number of times they've used it, which, which surprised me, disturbingly so, obviously. So I think, consistent with our committee.
Yeah.
We got, you know, I know we're gonna, probably after the budget, I know we have enough to do, right, please, but, right, we could maybe look at that, and, because that, that was disturbing. I didn't, that seemed like a very large amount
Yeah, yep.
of uses, of occurrences that they had to do, which, again, thank God, we do.
I'd rather have the large number of occurrences than.
Than the other side of that, yes. Oh, absolutely, no, absolutely, I mean, but it's, it would indicate to me more than I would, perhaps, you know, most of us maybe realize the scope of the problem in Berlin, you know, as we, we know, I mean, we know there's an issue everywhere, but, so. So we'll work on that after we get through the budget, that's, that's something very important to do. Anybody else? Comments? I just wanted to bring up, if I can, I think somebody stood up one day, and we were talking about, they were talking about Doc McIntosh, and we actually heard him mention tonight as well, if, if, if we would, you know, just commemorate him perhaps at, in the, what's that room? Caucus Room A. And I didn't even know, I got a resume, I did not, you know, I mean, I knew Doc McIntosh only through my early days, when we used to take our dog there, so Doc was always there. I didn't realize, Board of Finance, 24 years, Board of Ed, 19 years, I mean, it's just unbelievable, building commission, 10 years, Public Health Nursing Service, 6 years, Town Council, 4 years, 70 years, and the Britain Kiwanis Club, that's unbelievable. Central Connecticut Association for Retarded Citizens, 51 years, founder, veterinarian for 45 years. Friendship Center, constructive workshop in Britain, they're 16 years, founder, YMCA Board of Director, 16 years, founder. Sheldon Clinic, 6 years, Salvation Army, a host of awards. Berlin resident for 66 years, practicing veterinarian for 53, and served in the Army for 4 years during World War II, so. You know, quite, quite the public service, unbelievable, actually. So, maybe next meeting we'll put it on, make a motion now, this would, this would be no cost to, I mean, to the town. I mean, I think we have a, someone, I think volunteered to hang a portrait of him in that room, and maybe a little plaque, that's all I'm thinking about. I don't know what we have to do for that, can the council just make the motion, or how to?
Just accept the donation.
Yeah, right, accept the donation, we just put it, put it in the room, right?
Just like we accept the other donations, yeah. I think he served on the Board of Ed till he was 98 years old, 98 or 99, he was, yeah. I remember him at Board of Ed meetings when I was a kid, I went, yeah.
He probably, 98, he probably still had kids. So, okay, so we'll, we'll put it on, we'll, we'll work on the donation, and we'll get that as an acceptance, so, yeah, that's, that's incredible, I mean, that's just, like, can't be founded, all these various organizations. That's, that's unbelievable in itself, but anyway, all right, so that, we'll get that on an upcoming meeting to take care of that. Okay, anything else? Nothing else? Nothing? We're good, we're gonna, Acceptance of Minutes, February 21st, 2017, a motion to accept.
What was the date again, Mayor?
February 21st.
Move to accept the February 21st, 2017 minutes as amended.
Second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you very much, everyone.